Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Tuesday, January 16, 2018. I would ask all present to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the City Administrators to note the roll call. Councillor Jacksaw is coming, we believe. We would move to the agenda, and we have addition under New Business, item number three, to consider the Chamber of Commerce and Viking Bar request to close Fourth Avenue between Second and Third Street for Icebox Day events. And then on Correspondence, we would have the Library Board of Trustees meeting minutes. And also, under the reports of department heads, the building official zoning administrator will not be making his annual report at this meeting. With that, your pleasure with the agenda, the addition and deletions.
I would move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs.
Okay.
By Councillor Pearson to adopt the agenda with the additions and the deletion. Discussion on the agenda. Question.
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Agenda with the additions and deletions is approved. Next is the approval of the minutes of the Tuesday, January 2, regular City Council meeting.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Briggs to approve the minutes as presented. Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion of the minutes. Call a question?
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, and the motion is carried and the minutes are approved. Thank you. Next, we would move to the payment of claims and transfers. Under transfers, we have two funds, number 101, the General Fund from the Water and Sewer Fund, $9,951.67, to the Fund 401, the Permanent Improvement from the Water and Sewer Fund, $62,500, and to Fund number 403, the Reserve for Capital Outlay from the Water and Sewer Fund, a transfer of $25,760.42. We have accounts payable claims for the City of International Falls of $842,933.90, Airport Commission claims of $25,944.23, Library Board claims of $4,693.44. Your pleasure with the resolution authorizing the transfers and the payment of claims.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve those payments.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw to adopt that resolution approving the transfers and the payment of claims.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. No discussion. Chair would then call the question. All those, question on the resolution?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Resolution is adopted, approving the transfers and the payment of claims. Thank you. Move to the audience. Anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time? Don?
My name is Tom Higgins. I'm from Chicago. I'm from the police department. I'm from Dallas. I'm located in Red, uh, for John Peterson. I'm on the street. I have double driveway there. It's, uh, and I have a couple of buckets in the snow. They put a car off the street on the snow right next to John Peterson's driveway. And I've been helping out doing their shovel it out, out, and I told the police, you can see what happened, the top of the couple of trees, we're gonna take that whole thing through, through the rest of it. There's a lot of it. I'm just going to start the shovel. However, that is, they, I should be driving down, but you see if you notice about the snow there. I got today, it's part of the firework, they took a little bit of it, put it driveway, but then John's friends come and shovel it out, shovel it out, so you can get it cool. I go out there, there's still a bit of snow in there, not in the driveway. Actually, the other places, there's snow over on the street and Wood Street there. Very close to us, when I saw our alley on Kent Street, there's, uh, tucked into the lane. There's no power to clean that up, probably. I see a lot of trucks go through there today, but there's, uh, nothing but parking there. So many cars parked a few days there, and snow on there, no tickets. There's a ticket for air to, uh, just want people to move their car. Or, set on Ryan Street, been there. Probably everything, the main, other streets, I told, uh, my anger come nothing. I had something else to come, so, uh, between the two of us, we shut. I don't need it, but, as we can, I got a snowboard, I'll, but it's long ways off, but over there, but then, looks very good. Uh, people not, who heard of move that snow? I mean, walk, that's the snow.
Certainly, having snow issues is always a challenge here, and some folks take greater liberties than what they should in pushing snow around.
When the snow is, parks in there, and that's part of the trouble. It's not, uh.
We would ask the Street Commissioner to take a look at the 11th Street area there and see if we can help the situation.
What do we do, make do what we do with the poison or water, move the ice cream, because no one could.
We've had about 36 inches of snow so far this winter, and so it's starting to build up. We're only about halfway at this point, so we know we're gonna have more. I know that the Street Department does go around and try to remove snow on corners and other areas, and they will as time permits.
No one knows, well, they have it pushing the snow up the street, they push it home where the loader, always give you the pileers, push it over there.
We will, I know that the Police Department does issue calendar parking tickets as time permits also, if there's nothing else happening.
Especially when the snow, the town that come and travel that snow, wouldn't get cars parked, you know?
Makes it very difficult.
And some of them, you know?
Councillor Drogba.
Is it calendar parking on 11th Street?
No.
I can say the officers have been quite busy with the calendar parking. We've written a lot of calendar parking citations. Our numbers are actually up. Our officers have been steadily issuing red tag violations, putting red tags on vehicles that have been sitting within 24 hours, and we have towed a number of vehicles, so.
Another thing, I'm not home, I don't know what to do, so, I was by, shovel it away, it's easy to shovel.
That's easier, yes.
But, uh, it was.
Right. Thank you, Don.
Hi. President, from outdoors, I think he hasn't been doing that, and she's renting. Uh, she's at home, would she have to do that herself?
I'm not sure what the agreement is that she has with her landlord. I would think that.
She's been also on hot housing.
Well, I would think that you'd have to look at the agreement that the individual has with the landlord and determine. I don't know if it's the landlord's responsibility or the leasing's responsibility to.
You haven't had no information on it?
We wouldn't have information on it. That would be between the landlord and.
She's, you know, herself?
Well, that may be the case.
We need to be able to.
I think some of that is required by landlords, that someone mows lawn and shovels snow and so forth. So that is certainly a possibility.
But there really no bylaws for the, I have to, couldn't get help to shovel snow for them.
Well, I think, again, that's something that they would have to take up with their landlord.
I think, uh, from the, from the, I'm not sure if you'll be able to speak with them.
Well, yeah, I don't think we can get involved in every situation with landlord, between landlords and the renters. I think that they need to.
He gets ready for the times to, uh, relatives are reliable for, uh, they're not buying homes. We had, uh, it's hard to take care of it before something.
Well, I think, again, that they're gonna have to take that up with their landlord. Don't know where we would get into playing a role in that. Again, Julie, I don't know that there's a role for the city in that situation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the Hearing none and seeing none, we would move to the second and final reading of the ordinance of the fifth series, to amend the code of ordinances by repealing or amending the existing fees and establishing a new fee schedule for water rates, building and zoning permit fees. Council's pleasure with that second and final reading.
I'll make the motion that we approve that.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw to have the second reading of the ordinance. Second by Councillor Drogba. Discussion on the motion or the ordinance.
Can we separate these like last time?
The water rates and the building permit fees. Have a separate vote on each.
Yeah.
Okay. We would then have discussion on the water rate fee schedule.
Make a motion, or do a discussion?
We're gonna do it under one, but we'll have separate votes on each.
All right, all right.
No discussion on the water rates. We would, Chair would call for a question on the motion to adopt the new fee schedule for water rates.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried. And then we would have the building and zoning permit fees. I've accepted Councillor Jacksaw's and the second by Councillor Drogba. It's just we're having a separate vote on each of those fee items. Further discussion with regard to building and zoning permit fees increasing? Chair would then place the question before the council.
Aye.
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 I would vote yes, there being four for the motion and one against, building and zoning permit fees is also adopted. Move to the opening of bids and quotes, and under that item, we have the low quote of $10,196 from Baycom to acquire four Panasonic Toughbook CF-54 MK3 InScout computers for the Police Department, payable from the 2017 Reserve for Capital Outlay, and one additional from the 2018 as needed. Motion by Councillor Drogba to accept the low quote of Baycom at $10,196 for the four.
Second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw. Any points, Chief, that you would wanna make with regard to that?
Not really, Mr. Mayor. We've done a lot of due diligence in this process, and as the council knows, it's been a while. Uh, we've come to this product and this company, we feel.
This allows for the additional purchase of a fifth one, should you decide to do that?
Yes.
Very good. Further questions or discussion? Chair would then call the question on the motion to approve the low quote.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and the low quote to purchase the four Panasonic computers for the Police Department is approved. Thank you. There being no old business or consent agenda, we would move to new business. First item under new business is the proclamation and observance of Black History Month for February 2018. Council's pleasure with that.
Make a motion.
Motion by Councillor Jacksaw.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson to adopt the proclamation and approve its being published. Discussion.
I just wanna thank Councillor Drogba for bringing this to our attention, don't die on our agenda. Thank you, Harold.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Yes, motion is carried. Proclamation is adopted and will be published. Thank you. Item number two is similar under new business, and that's a proclamation and observance of Catholic Schools Week for the local St. Thomas Aquinas School, and that week is January the 28th through February the 3rd. Council's pleasure with that proclamation.
Move.
Motion by Councillor Drogba.
Second.
Second by Councillor Pearson. Discussion on the motion or the proclamation. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Proclamation is adopted and will be published. Thank you. Item number three, new business is the, one addition to the agenda, and that's to consider the Chamber of Commerce Viking Bar request to close Fourth Avenue between Second Street and Third Street on Saturday, January 20, from 12:30 p.m. to 4:30 p.m. for Icebox Days events. Joanne, do you have anything you wanna state, or?
No, it would just be, um, you would be doing the toilet seat toss, and then the kids and adults.
Oh, the two events would be the toilet seat toss and the smooch races? That's the council's pleasure with that.
Move.
Second.
Motion by Councillor Briggs, second by Councillor Jacksaw.
How's the weather gonna be?
Should be good.
Warmer, I think, huh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and the request for the closure of the street is approved. Thank you. Good luck to everybody in the smooch races and the toilet seat toss. Item number four under new business is 2018 license renewal for TRM 5 Incorporated, doing business as Sammy's Pizza and Restaurant, an on-sale liquor license, Sunday liquor license, and restaurant license. Council's pleasure with the license renewal. Motion by Councillor Drogba.
I'll second.
Second by Councillor Jacksaw to approve. Discussion?
Yeah, when are they coming?
My understanding, it could be sometime in the spring, that they were completing a project in Grand Rapids and were also in the process of working on some land, but they did some work on the parking lot last fall and would now be looking to start, I believe, work on the building. They wanna do some remodeling to the building. That's as much knowledge as I have. I did meet with the owner at one point last year. Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And a vote yes, motion is carried, and licenses are renewed for Sammy's Pizza and Item number five under new business is the appointment of two commissioners to the North Kuchiching Area Sanitary District, and would ask the council to concur in the reappointment of Keisha Pearson, Councillor Keisha Pearson, to a three-year term, and Robert Thompson, a reappointment to a three-year term.
Wanna take these individually?
Or if you like.
Better one than two. Do you wanna take them individually?
I'll take, oh, I would move on both appointments.
And I'll second.
Motion by Councillor Drogba to concur with both reappointments, and second by Councillor Jacksaw. Question on the motion to concur with the reappointments.
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried with four for and one abstention. Amendments reapproved. Thank you. Item number six is the appointment, and I would be appointing myself to represent the city on the Northeast Minnesota Area Transportation Partnership, and to attend the meeting in Evlith on February the 14th for that. Motion by Councillor Jacksaw. Second by Councillor Pearson. Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried. Appointment is approved. Thank you. Item number seven is to approve the labor agreement between the City of International Falls and the Woodworkers Lodge, W-33, the IAMAW AFL-CIO for the International Falls Police Department. The agreement would be from January 1, 2018, through December 31, 2020. City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. We've had several meetings with the business agent and the negotiating committee on behalf of the union and the city's labor negotiating committee, and we've come to a tentative agreement on the labor agreement with the Police Department. The Police Department, union encompasses everybody in the Police Department with the exception of the chief, so it includes the captain, sergeants, and patrol officers. This particular contract is a three-year agreement, would be effective January 1, 2018 if approved, extending to December 31 of 2020. Essentially, there was some change in language, and as far as the economic issues of this particular contract, as I indicated, it's a three-year contract, and the pay would increase by an amount of 1% in 2018, 1 and 1/2% in 2019, and 2% in 2020. And then there was also some increases in the health insurance that the city would pay, and it went from, it's increasing from $1,100 to $1,200 in 2018, $1,250 in 2019. At the labor negotiating, I've had a verbal conversation with the business agent on the phone this morning, and read the contract language verbatim, but he's confident that we can work through any issues. Over the course of this week, traveling today out of state. I can respond to any questions or other members of the negotiating committee under those as well. The, I guess, item that could be open for discussion would be in the salary schedule. Currently, the police officers have five different steps in their pay structure, and the union expressed an interest in having the same pay schedule as the firefighters, which would be a four-step system, but it would be based on a calendar year basis, actually an anniversary date basis versus a number of hours worked, which would be some language here, so. So, this interest is, and moving forward.
Pleasure with the approval of the labor agreement?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, on behalf of the negotiators, Brian and yourself, I would make a motion that we approve this contract as written.
I would second it. Motion by Councillor Jacksaw, second by Councillor Briggs to approve the labor agreement with the International Falls, the union representing the International Falls Police Department, and with regard to the question of the steps, do you want to address that issue, or?
We would leave it as is, rather than changing it to the anniversary date, given that there is some, that we have full agreement on that, and so, we're going to revert back to the original language.
Thank you, good. There being no change in that, that's not necessary to have in the motion, then? Questions or discussions with regard to the labor agreement? It was a very amicable and good period of negotiations with the officers and the union, and a fair labor agreement. Are there no further questions or discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
A vote yes, motion is carried, and labor agreement is. No vote yes, motion is carried and labor agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number eight is similar in that it's a labor agreement between the City of International Falls, Woodworkers Lodge W-333, International Association of Machinists, AFL-CIO for the firefighter engineer and paramedics. The Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The terms of this contract are similar as far as economics are concerned as the question that we just had on the police contract. I would add that we've modified the language for agreement. I had the process with that and there was mutual agreement. And that is included in the proposed contract.
Okay, council's pleasure with the labor agreement with the firefighter engineers and paramedics?
I would move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw. Questions or discussions with regard to the labor agreement or the motion?
I would add that we're gonna have a commission, that committee that looks at the paramedic... They'll be ongoing work. Don't go home.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the labor agreement?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried and labor agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number nine under new business is to accept the International Falls Economic Development Authority transfer of $6,000 to the City of International Falls, authorizing the mayor and the city administrator's signature to use the funds for consultant costs to prepare a Koochiching County housing study, per the recommendations of the Koochiching County Housing Collaborative.
I'll make that motion that we approve that.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the acceptance of those funds from the EDA.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion?
If we have an opportunity with the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, they'll be partnering with us in writing a grant and application for study. And this is a, we're going to leverage these dollars to focus on the city and that is a more cost-effective way to go than if we took off on our own on this. So this is a wise use of funds and a wise way of approaching this issue of housing. Our housing stock is extremely old. By reinvigorating the housing for our citizens, we can... ...space, encourage pride in our community. Buy better housing for children and that housing is, directly impacts their ability to compete and perform in our school system. So there are many multiple benefits to the city stepping in and helping to foster improvements in our housing stock and this is a first step.
And while it's called the Koochiching County Housing Study, it will focus on the City of International Falls as well as the other cities of the county, so it's certainly going to have the kind of depth necessary for developers who may be interested in looking at doing development in International Falls.
Unless we think this is not an unusual effort by cities, many, many cities in our, in the Northeast Minnesota have already undertaken housing studies. Grand Rapids for one, Bemidji for another. I think Hibbing has as well, so it's something cities do.
Further discussion? Councilor Drowba?
I do understand that other cities do housing studies and I understand that we're getting a little bit more for our money because we're putting in $6,000 for a county study. I understand that. I just, I have hesitation on it because I don't know what we're gonna get for the $6,000 for the City of International Falls. Was that a number we came up with or is that what they would charge for a city study? I think the scope should be the City of International Falls, not necessarily a countywide study and then having a little focus on the different cities. Did Little Fork pitch in for a study for their city? Did North Home pitch in for the study of their city? I mean, I'm okay with getting the study and I understand we need to put money towards it, but I don't understand how we're focusing in on International Falls's issues by pitching in for the entire countywide study. That's the question I still have on this.
The city administrator and Councilor Jacksaw and myself have been attending the housing collaborative meetings and as Councilor Jacksaw pointed out, the Minnesota Housing is going to come up with $10,000. The...
Akas and...
Akas and Kutaska are coming up with dollars. We believe that other cities in the county will make contributions. I think North Home... City Administrator, did you have information on the North Home group?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor, Council. I was advised that the Snowmobile Club in North Home is contributing $1,000 to the venture.
I believe Rainier will be forthcoming too because the city administrator sits up. So there seems to be buy-in to move forward with this process.
I think estimated cost is somewhere between $30,000 and $35,000 for such a study. So we expect that hopefully the county will be placing funds in there as well as the other cities.
TCD, perhaps, I think they mentioned.
Further questions or discussion?
Do we think that this is a core function at this time? And we do have other things we...
I think certainly housing is a core function of communities. I think that in order to be able to attract developers and have them understand what the scope of housing is in the community and where there are needs, we need to have a study that spells that out in good detail. And so I think that it's important for us to do that.
I believe that a study like this is necessary and it's integral to economic development within our community and that's why we decided to use the funds out of the EDA. It only makes sense that you need to plan what you have for housing if you're gonna move forward in economic development so far as any developer to bring people in here and you don't have, they'd like to know what kind of housing stock you have available before they would move here. An example would be what's happened with Polaris out in Roseau expanding and they don't have housing and they're shipping people from other towns. Thief River had the same issue with their economic development efforts out there. And so, I think it would help us to help developers that might want to come here and do something.
I would support, Mr. Mayor, I would support Brian, Councilor Briggs' assertion because it was, it was, it can be supported by what the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency representative said at the meetings, that basically you cannot get anywhere with a developer, period, without a housing study. So we won't be talking to developers unless we have a housing study to show them. So, they were pretty adamant about how necessary this step is.
And I think it's an opportune time with Minnesota Housing Finance willing to take and give us a grant for virtually one-third of the cost of the study.
Yeah. Yeah.
Also, I would like to think that this would also tie in with our comprehensive plan as we move forward with that, too.
Very timely, because we do have some overlap there, too, so that we can take, we can focus these, this effort more specifically because of the land, comprehensive land use plan and they're both occurring at the same time or close to the same time.
One last question.
Yes, Councilor Drowba?
Is, we had a conversation on what we get for the plan. Is this gonna be what we need guaranteed to be able to get those developers to come in? Because we've had that issue before, we thought that we had something in the comprehensive plan that didn't amount to what we needed. So does this meet the requirements of what we have?
Well, it's more complex than that and I'll defer to our city administrator who's been an EDA director. And when a developer comes in, they also have another step to do themselves, don't they? They usually do a marketing plan above and beyond.
Market feasibility analysis, those are some plans and specifications into the specifics about what a housing project might look like. But the earlier step to try and generate that developer interest is what the conversation has been about, is that this housing study is really key to even generate, identify whether or not there is a market for them to invest in having a market feasibility study prepared. Twelve units or is it 24 units that might be needed in a particular house?
The housing feasibility study then, is that on the developer at that point or is, are we in for another $5,000 when someone wants to build something here to start helping them along that process?
No. Such that the market feasibility study would be a developer expense, but before they're willing to even invest that amount to study the issue, they're already gonna have this housing study that's really looking at it countywide, taking the first step to show that there really is a clear need and documenting what the need is and where particular type of housing, location within the county. I would just add that workforce housing is probably the number one economic development issue around the state as well as finding skilled labor to fill the...
And then finally, I think that the, you know, the comprehensive land use plan shows that we do have, we have to examine it further, but it, on the face of it, it appears that we have a low vacancy rate, below what's considered healthy in town for rental units anyway. Sorry, thought I shut this off. Meaning that we do need, we do have some problems here that we need to solve, above and beyond, above and beyond the state of the housing, you know, which is...
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, the chair would then call the question on the approval of the transfer of $6,000 to the city from the International Falls Economic Development Authority.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
No vote yes, there being three for the motion and two opposed. Motion carries. Transfer is approved. Thank you. Item number 10 under new business, budget and finance committee recommendation, I would, Chair Drowba, if you would lead that?
Yes, we had a meeting this afternoon and the first item that we had approved was a $1,200 to go to services for FEMA assistance for the firefighter grant. I would move that as the committee chair forward at this time.
We have a motion by Councilor Drowba?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw to approve agreement with Witze Smith and Nolting Engineering to provide a grant writing for $1,200 for the purchase and installment of a diesel exhaust system for the fire hall. This be the $1,200 for the grant writing services that we would be approving. Questions or discussion?
I'd just like to note that I think it's critical that we get a system like this because of the potential health risks to people working in our fire hall. I'm disappointed that we don't have more time, that we couldn't find an alternative source for the grant writing, but because of the health safety issue, I would...
Thank you. Further questions or discussion? Hearing none, chair would place the question to approve the agreement to have the Witze Smith and Nolting firm do the grant writing for $1,200.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried and agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number 11 under new business is the Fire Civil Service Commission appointments of an assistant chief, captain, and safety officer for the International Falls Fire Department. City Administrator?
Just, Mayor, as you indicated, the Fire Civil Service Commission had met and they're making recommendations, actually, they made appointments for... They're appointing Mr. Bowler to the assistant chief position, captain position, and so they were appointing Andrew, captain position, and then there's a safety position that's vacant because Mr. Al... And they're appointing Zumb to the vacant safety... To make those officer appointments and they did so at a meeting on January 8th.
Thank you. Questions with regard to that? We'll move to item number 12 under new business and that's to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Hiring Committee.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Oh, we don't have to approve those appointments?
No.
Okay.
It was provided as information. Again, item number 12 is the recommendation of the Public Works Hiring Committee to hire an individual for the light equipment operator position.
Can I give this to everybody?
Everyone has a copy of the recommendation that the committee is pointing out. Street Commissioner Broca?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we had 50 applicants, we interviewed six, very good interviews. We recommend, our recommendation is Andy Kittleson and we recommend he started 80% of the current wage.
You've heard the recommendation of the Street Department Hiring Committee to fill the position of the light equipment operator position, Mr. Andy Kittleson.
I would move on the hiring of Mr. Kittleson.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilor Briggs, second by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the hiring of Mr. Andy Kittleson for the light equipment operator position in the Street Department. Questions or discussion?
What was his position? This was a while back, wasn't it?
Lot of interest, 50 applications.
50 applicants, that's amazing.
Yeah, it is.
It turned out really well. It was a tough decision.
Were there people that applied outside of the area? Were there people that applied outside of the area?
Actually, we had two, I believe, and we actually had one with public works experience that we were interested in interviewing, but I couldn't get her to turn any phone calls. So, I don't know if it was a change in number or what, but I called him a dozen times. So, we advertised on the League of Minnesota Cities, um, public work side of it, and so, we got one applicant from out of town that had public works experience.
Speaks well for the department, that we, you know, people wanna work there.
Hearing none, then, chair would then place the question on the approval of Mr. Andy Kittleson to that light equipment operator position.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried. Hiring is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 13 is the advertising for applicants to fill the part-time police officer eligibility roster. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, uh, as we spoke before, our part-time eligibility roster is exhausted at this point, and, uh, advertised to accept applications to see what kind of interest we have out there, what kind of pool candidates are... Applications on an ongoing...
The Civil Service Commission would, uh, would conduct those, uh, conduct that process?
We would, uh, I would handle the applications that they would conduct.
Very good. Hey, your pleasure with, uh, approving the advertising of, um, part-time patrol officer positions for the City of International Falls Police Department?
I'll move.
Motion by Counselor Jacksaw.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Questions or discussions with regard to the motion or the advertising for applicants? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and advertising is approved. Go forth, thank you. Any other new business?
Do that under, um, under committees, but I'll, but I can do it at this time, and thank you for raising that. Today, the city administrator and I received a, uh, request from the Northeast Minnesota Regional Emergency Communications Board, um, requesting that, uh, the governing authority appoint someone from the city council to participate in the emergency communications board and their meetings. Counselor Dova has kindly agreed to, uh, accept that appointment, and I would put forth his name at this time.
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Briggs, second by Counselor Jacksaw, to concur with the appointment of Counselor Dova to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communications Board. Discussion.
With your background in, uh, as a veteran in that, I think he'll be, he'll do well.
I mean, he likes to talk? That's what I thought you was gonna say. With your background of liking to talk. I had to say that hardly.
I think, you know, if you're in the military, you have a sort of a background for some of that, I think. I don't know. What do I know?
Please, check. City Administrator?
Does the request for appointees talk about renewing the appointment of Nathan Myers? Or is that done separately?
I would do that one separately for the RAC Committee.
Yes.
Yes. Anything further on the, um, this motion? The chair would call the question then on, uh, approving the appointment of Counselor Dova to the Northeast Minnesota Emergency Communication Board.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, there being four for the motion and one abstention. Motion carries, and the appointment is approved. Thank you. And then to the Regional Advisory Committee, and city administrator, I, I wasn't sure if the, if Chief Manasa was the representative and Nathan was the alternate. You, I asked the chief if he could get me that information, and, uh, I know he was tied up in some meetings at the hospital today.
I can't say with certainty myself. I thought, I thought, uh, Mr. Myers was actually on the board.
Did we have approval of either Chief Manasa or Nathan? Last name Myers, thank you. I have another Nate, last name of another Nathan, and, um, to approve them to the representative and alternate to the Regional Advisory Committee?
Moved.
Motion by Counselor Dova.
So, are we voting for either one as alternate, or is it in that?
One or the other will serve as representative, and one will serve as the alternate. I'm not sure which one. We'll continue the reappointment of whoever is serving now.
Okay. Second.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw.
Aye.
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 No vote yes, motion is carried, and appointments to the Regional Advisory Committee are approved. Thank you. Further under new business. Move to reports of boards, committees, and department heads, city administrator.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney is not here at this time. Chief Mastin.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, uh, yeah, my December activity report for the police department, since I was not at the first meeting this month. In December, we had our defensive tactics training, which is held jointly at the law enforcement center with the sheriff's office. We had our deer graduation, executed one drug search warrant, and assisted with, uh, we had Saturday, 113 traffic stops, 32 medical assists, and 106 ICRs were generated for a total of the 577, uh, capable of 2016.
Questions for the Chief Mastin with regard to December report? Put together your, your annual report, will you be doing that?
I've, I've been thinking about it. You know, this is, this is done in a very, kind of an archaic way. I talked to you about that before, so, um, we're not looking at it. Once we transition into this new system...
The state? The states?
Right.
I know we receive these every month, but I would think a report showing the totality of each of those areas would be pretty significant.
Yes.
And, uh, I know we've got a couple other reports coming in the first meeting of February from Public Works and from the building official. And so I, I think it'd be helpful to, to have that if you've got time.
I'll work on that, Mr. Mayor.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would add that the, that one of the advantages of the Zerker system that we're funding is that we should be able to have much more expanded reporting. I think going forward into 2019, once that, that system gets established, I believe the scheduling is, or the training is scheduled for latter part of February or March, so, so before we're actually operational on that, there's a few months that has to transpire, but, um, I'm hoping that you can get a little bit more detailed and throw... I think that the main thing with our reporting in all of our departments is just to try and monitor trends. You know, are we seeing more activity, less activities, a pretty constant? This is, um, to try and deal with those trends.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, city administrator. Move to the reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
I have something.
Counselor Jacksaw.
I, you know, not to let the EITE law go by the wayside, I, um, how many are in gas? Minnesota Energy.
How many are what?
On gas on the council here. Okay. Did you look at this rate increase proposed? It, I, it was in my last bill. They're raising the residential rates like they did with the electrical rates, and lowering the commercial rate, the large industrial rates, not the small. The small commercial's going up, um, let's see here. The residential's going up from 24 cents to almost 29 cents. That's a 20% increase. And the, uh, small commercial would be your retail shops downtown, going up 4 cents, a 20% increase. And, something very parallel to what we saw with the electrical rate increase under the EITE law. And the commercial, large industrial, is going down. So, again, we see a shift in, at the Public Utility Commission, shifting costs from the large user down to the small. Now, does this benefit Boise? The EITE law did not benefit this town, any way, shape, form. Neither does this. Boise buys their gas from Canada. So what this amounts to is another shift of resources out of this community. When you're thinking about people, I think of us as one big community, and we share this pot. And when we have corporations from outside the area dipping into our constituents' pockets, it makes our job more difficult to govern the city, and it has a very negative impact with the multiplier effect on the income that people are gonna spend here. So it has a negative impact on the economy. But anyway, the law, the, the law paved the way, the EITE law paved the way for this kind of maneuver, and so there is no way we're gonna stop this now.
I have a question, though. You, you say that Boise gets their gas from Canada.
Mm-hmm.
Ours isn't coming from Canada, do you?
No, our gas, we, we buy from Minnesota Energy.
Oh, that isn't the gas line coming across, or?
Yes, the, the, all of the gas that comes into International Falls, both for the paper mill and for the community, comes from the fields, um, in Canada. The company, the paper company buys their gas from Minnesota Energy as well as local citizens.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Okay. Well, in this case, then, at least there'll be a benefit to somebody.
On the bridge, um, and comes onto paper company property, and then diverts and comes to the city. And the only reason that we were able to get gas for the community was because the paper mill was willing to change from burning coal to burning gas. And so that made it worthwhile for a pipeline to be built, uh, from Manitoba into, uh, Port Frances, and then over to International Falls.
So all the gas is coming from Canada? Okay. Well, then, in that case, this law, this change isn't quite so egregious, because we can point to the mill as getting some benefit, but under the electrical, there was none. It was all negative, with this at least, but it is happening. We're gonna see more pressure on our struggling families with higher utility bills, not only in electricity, but now in heat. Anyway.
Thank you. Further...
I'll adjust, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, other boards and commissions? Yes, Counsel Dova.
I have something fun. Um, so this last week, I was contacted by, uh, a young Boy Scout in our community, and he was, uh, he's actually a Cub Scout, he's going to be a Boy Scout, and he is, uh, earning his merit badge on, uh, city government and civics, and he needed to interview a city councillor. Um, apparently, I was the one that he found, and, uh, we sat down for about a 15-minute discussion and asked about city government, and asked about, uh, all kinds of in, information about the city, and, uh, he really made me squirm a little bit, 'cause he was asking some really, really, uh, hard questions, um, about why we do this. Why, why, why do we do this as city councillors? And I actually took that home with me. Why, and I think some of us, we need to think about this sometimes, why do we sit up here?
Because we care.
Because we care. And, and that's, that's what I told him. And the more I thought about it is, I got on city council to try to make change. There were things that were happening on the city council that I didn't agree with, and now I'm here, and I just, I just think that sometimes we get so caught up in paperwork and meetings that we don't do things. Like, we need to follow through with more things than, uh, than we do, and I know that a lot of meetings go into stuff, and I just, what I took out of it is, we're all here for the right reasons, and I think we need to follow through more as a city council, and do what we sat up here to do, and make hard decisions, uh, rather than kick the can down the road from time to time. So, I just, I found it very interesting having a meeting with a young man, actually opened up my mind to, sometimes I think we, we lose focus of what we're doing up here, 'cause we have so many meetings, but we don't actually follow through all the time. So, that was just my, my take of it. I, I apologize that I, I kinda rambled on that, but it was very, very interesting to meet with a young man who doesn't know what we do as a city government, and to have back-and-forth conversation, and I got a really good laugh out of him when he asked me what I didn't think I'd, I would, uh, get out of city council, and I said, "I know more about sewer and water than I should." So...
Well, I, and I think, you know, being a city councillor is a privilege, because you learn so much about how a community functions. And this is where it all happens. It really happens in, at the city level. It doesn't happen at any other level, it's delegated down to the city, really. We're the implementers, right? I mean, what do they do in St. Paul, really? You know, they pass funding, but they don't actually clean the street, or, or deliver water, or pick up garbage, or anything like that. So...
They make mandates.
Right.
And expect us to pay for them.
So the way I feel is, is that we're where the action is, you know? And sometimes it doesn't seem like we do a lot, but I think, that's the other thing. Mayor, you should do a state of the city address, and, uh, which should be speaking of annual reports. You're good at that. And, you know, that would give an opportunity for the city to tout its horn a little bit, and really, talk about what public service and what we have accomplished. We have accomplished some things. Easy one is the airport, right? I mean, I'm proud of that airport. I am. I go out there, you know? Looks great.
Comment every day.
Yeah. It makes you feel proud that that airport belongs to us, right? And we've done some other good things. So, yeah, and it's hard. Government moves slowly, because you have to have consensus. It's far easier to run a business, really, really. And I could go off on that, but I won't. But, you know. Anyway, state of the, state of the city address, Mr. Mayor. You'd be excellent at it.
I'll endeavor to try to do something here in February. Thank you, Counsel Dova, for sharing that. I think that, uh, I certainly wish that more citizens would ask questions of the council, and, uh, great to hear from citizens who are concerned about, uh, snow removal. I think, uh, what we try to do as a city council and as a, a city employees, administration is to provide the services that folks can't provide for themselves, and, and hopefully that, that works out well. I do have one, uh, request of you, though, and that's, uh, from the budget and finance meeting. I thought we had a motion with regard to the Schlenner, Wenner proposal to separate.
Yes.
And, uh, so I'm gonna call on you to...
Uh, again, earlier today, we had the budget and finance meeting, and we had a, uh, a motion to move forward with... to move forward with the separating of our Fund 601, the Water and Sewer Fund.
And Storm Sewer.
And Storm Sewer. So, I would move forward with that proposal at this time.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Droba to move forward with the study by Schlener and Wenner to separate Fund 601, Water, from Sewer and Storm Sewer.
Would you... What's the total cost on that? What are we looking at? There's a range there.
Almost around $3,500.
Well, I think there was three parts to it.
City Administrator?
It was $3,700, up to $3,700 for one part, $1,200 for another part. So, I think we're looking at five.
Chair would look for a second to the motion by Counselor Droba. Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Thank you.
Sorry, but I think it's up to five. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, as you indicated, we received a proposal from Schlener-Wenner. That's the name of the company that does our annual audits. We asked them for a proposal about what it would cost to assist with the accounting services to separate the Water and the Sewer Funds into two separate funds. And as part of the discussion at the Budget and Finance Committee, we did highlight that within the Water and Sewer Fund, we also have some levy dollars that we apply towards the cost to maintain our Storm Sewer System. So, the recommendation was to move forward with appropriating fees out of the Water and Sewer Fund to allow the firm of Schlener-Wenner assist us in separating the assets of the Water Department and the Sewer Department from the Storm Water... Or from the Storm Sewer System and... One would be for the Water Fund, a separate fund for the Sanitary Sewer Fund, and then a recommendation about where we should allocate our Storm Sewer expenses, which, again, are reflected currently in the Combined Water and Sewer Fund. So, the cost to do that, they identified $1,200 to help update financial statements. They identified a fee of $1,300 for audit documentation for split balances between the funds, and then a cost of $3,700 to $5,000 to capitalize and propose adjustments to the balances. And they would charge their services out at the rate of $120 per hour, and the numbers I...
Altogether, we're looking at $2,500 plus $5,000, or up to $7,500.
That's right. We have that motion by Counselor Droba.
And I second it.
Second by Counselor Jacksaw. Discussion?
Exactly what I was talking about on we talk and we have a lot of meetings. This has been two years. So, the fact that we're moving forward with it is fantastic.
Well made. No further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
No vote yes. Motion is carried, and the study by Schlener-Wenner is approved. Thank you. Further, under Council Committees, Boards, and Commissions. Have my written report. Counsel, nothing further there. We'll go to the audience. Only one here is Dwayne. Any questions, Dwayne?
No.
I'd like to thank law enforcement for the statements.
Where was this?
At the radio station.
Good information. Thank you. Further?
No.
Couple things I have for the agenda next time. I'm just going to mention this. Well, one thing, I should say. We agreed in budget to increase the... For the councillors and the mayor. You remember that? So, we need... You don't remember? No, we did.
I think I must have been gone that meeting.
I think we went from 500... What, do you remember?
500 to 700.
To 700, and then it was...
700 to 1,000 for the mayor.
Anyway, we need to approve that on our agenda in order to actually move forward with claiming our contingencies for the new year. We need to separately approve that, because it's an increase.
Yes.
So, that should be on our next agenda.
Duly noted. City Administrator?
I would like to...
Thank you. Further to come before the city council? The trustees meeting of the library board, and next regular city council meeting, as the City Administrator just pointed out, is February the 5th at 4:30 PM. Nothing further to come before the council at this time. Stand adjourned.